Okay, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable access is afforded so that the public can follow along with these deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 and access code 235-235-861. Or the public can join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are all available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Permit me to confirm that all members in person who are anticipated on the agenda participating remotely are present and can hear me at this time. I don't think we have any. Okay, so that is not needed. Okay. And with that, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those members of the public that are here, the continued public meeting on Whitney Street Home Builders LLC for a local initiative project for housing development at 16 Perry Place has been continued to the 11th of October, which is our next scheduled meeting. So that matter will not be being heard this evening.
We don't have a meeting tonight?
There's no meeting on that matter tonight, no sir. And otherwise, a motion would be in order to go into executive session in accordance with Master in Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A2. To deliberate on matters which if done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to non-union contract negotiations, to come out of executive session and reconvene in an open meeting. Following a second to the motion, a roll call vote is required.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, good call. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Aye.
And the chair is a yes, is a vote.
You have to declare, Mr. Chairman, you're going to reconvene in an open session.
Yep, so I then declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public bodies relative to non-union contract negotiations, and the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in an open meeting. Okay, we are reconvening this meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I would also like to, it had been stated earlier, I apologize if you folks hadn't been here yet, if you're here for the Perry Place project, that public meeting or that public hearing has been continued until the 11th of October at 6:30 PM. So there'll be no discussion on that matter this evening. The developer has asked for more time really to address the concerns that have been coming in from the community members, so we'll be hearing that on the 11th. All right, and with that, do we have a motion to move up Agenda Item 7A?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yep.
And the chair is a yes. All right, so Agenda Item 7A, you want to take that one, Julie, or? I apologize, I had the wrong. No, we had it right.
Sorry, I think you're moving up six inches.
That was the original agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Got it. So I think we just have to say what the attorneys are saying.
All right, so the town and the next town manager have signed or entered into a contract which needs to be ratified in open session. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to ratify the contract for the next town manager?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, that has been ratified.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good day.
Thank you, Attorney Muskis.
Thank you for coming.
All right, moving on to public comments. I see we do have one public comment from Darlene Coyle, our DDIS Director on Waste Bans.
Sure, can you give that to her?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So I wanted to, I'm here, Darlene Coyle, Director of Department of Development and Inspection Services, and I'm joined with Colleen Hines, our Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator. And I'm here because I wanted to bring to the board's attention that DEP has some changes to the waste ban regulations that are coming as of November 1st. November 1st, they will be adding two new waste ban items to their regulations, mattresses and textiles. So effective November 1st, you can no longer put those in the solid waste stream. I'm here tonight because I wanted to let the residents know that we do have, we do have options for getting rid of mattresses in compliance with the ban. Our hauler does do bulk pickup, so our residents can call Casella directly and set up an appointment to have their mattress and box spring picked up. That is a curbside service, and the cost of that is $41.20 each, $41.21 for each, both the mattress and the box spring, and that is any size. Additionally, we have another option that we spoke with them about, and there is a curbside, there's, I'm sorry, a drop-off option. So we're fortunate to have the facility on 15 Hardscrabble Road, and so residents are able to drop off mattresses from now through October 31st, and that is a reduced price of $25. So if you have the option to drop it off, it is a little bit cheaper, and they are going to hold that price until October 31st. Normally, they were going to be going up in the next month, but they will honor that price. So $25 to drop off at the Hardscrabble Road facility, and the town is waiving the normal $10 fee for a Casella day pass. Or we do have the bulk option, they can call Casella directly and set up an appointment, and they will come curbside. Typically, those bulk pickups are done once a week. If anybody has any questions about any of these services, they can certainly call our office, and we're happy to help them with that. And then, in relation to textiles, we're hoping to bring something to the board in the next month or so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings presentations, we have Agenda Item 5A, Motor Vehicle Class Class 1 License, Patrick Automotive Incorporated, doing business as Patrick Volvo, 519 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. Members have the application in your packets. Do we have a presenter?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
A second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Yes, do we have a presenter here? Do we have a presenter here? Oh, yes. Yes. Do you want to come upstairs, or? First off, sir, I just want to make sure that you would like to proceed forward. We presently have a four-member board, not a five-member, and one member is not here this evening, which means you would need a unanimous vote from the three of us. I just wanted to, forewarn. Okay, excellent, thank you. You can proceed.
I think you didn't understand.
Did you have anything to present, sir, or? Did you have anything to present to us on the matter, or?
Just to say, uh, forty-four days.
Okay. Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, do the members have any questions?
This is the Lux property.
No? Patrick.
519 Washington Street.
Back up.
We already had a Saab franchise along with Volkswagen for the last 25 years since we've been in Auburn.
Can you just say your name for the record, sir?
Neil Patrick, I'm the owner-in-principle.
Thank you.
But what we're doing is replacing the Saab franchise with Volvo. Volvo franchise we have in Worcester right now. We want to move it to Auburn next to Volkswagen. The building is already up, we have all the plans in place, it's already approved by the planning board, the town manager has approved it. All right, that goes, so we had bringing Volvo out, which will replace the Saab franchise. Same amount of cars, same amount of traffic, nothing is going to change.
I know, I can't see which caller it's coming from.
Can you mute all callers?
Can you mute them all?
Yeah, I just see it. I think we see it.
Here we go.
Got it.
My apologies, sir.
No problem.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So this is the existing building, you're splitting it out, running separate entities?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ruffley, any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. We do have in the packets a letter from a department head saying they had no issues with the project as well. I've been, I live in the area, so I've been watching it as I drive by, and it's been coming along nicely. I'm sure it's going to be a great project. All right, do we have a, do we have any public comments? Sure, if you'd just come to the podium, ma'am, and state your name and address.
My name is Linda Boycell, I live at 122 South Street, and I just had questions in regards to the license. Are we going to be able to find out how many additional cars are going to be in the lot with the new, with this add-on of the Saab?
Nothing is going to change.
Sir, if you could just talk through the chair, just into the microphones.
The amount of cars is not going to change from our permit that we originally had for Saab cars. Saab is being replaced by Volvo, which is the same amount of volume, the same amount of cars. Our numbers will not be increased by one car.
Okay, thank you.
And with this new dealership, are there going to be any outdoor speakers installed?
Ever.
Okay. And the hours of operation, will that change at all?
Exactly the same.
Okay. And the dimming of the lights at the end of the business day?
We have all new lights that are less illumination than we had before.
Okay. And the loading and unloading of the cars on Route 20?
Never on Route 20, always in our lot, and during daytime hours only.
Because I've seen them load and unload on Route 20 a number of times.
They did, we always bring them in, so.
Okay. And the direction the test driving will be done? Because they, they're coming, since they changed the one-way operation, they've been going a lot down South Street, over 390 and then up again, and then back down to your facility.
Well, we will change that back to the original route, which was on, off of Route 20, take a right at the Roast Beef.
Yep.
That's, that's the route, that's South Street you're taking right up. Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Are you changing or adding more cars to that?
No, we're not changing the route, it'll stay the same.
So you'll add all of those cars to traveling down South Street now?
The same amount of cars as we had, so.
Okay, all right. There's no way that that can be at least switched so that you can go down Route 20 and turn around and come back, as opposed to, South Street is only 20 feet wide, so.
Ma'am, I certainly hear your concerns, and I understand and respect them. This, these, a lot of these questions would have been for the planning board when they were approving the actual project, the site project that was done. This was just being a license. You know, I'm sure you could reach out to ownership and discuss these matters with them, but it really doesn't necessarily pertain to the license. I myself, this project's been going on so long, I remember approving the lights when I was on the planning board some three years back now.
Route 20 is a dangerous road for test drives, so that's the reason we chose to get off Route 20 sooner than later.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir? If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mike Schillinger, 12 Diane Ave. I share some of the same concerns. I realize that you're not the planning board, but I was here at the planning board meetings, and you're going to hear it again from me. Again, a concern about the lighting, 12 Diane Ave is directly across from Patrick's. I appreciate that they are changing the lighting over there. Hopefully, it will be a more dim and controlled lighting environment. Looking forward to seeing what we end up with. Those lighting plan maps are very difficult to read. For the most part, Patrick's has been a very good neighbor, quiet, no PA system outside. Looking forward to getting the construction noise done, as I'm sure you're looking forward to getting it done as well. That's about it. It's, my main concern is the lighting, and hopefully, it's an improved lighting over what was there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
Okay. Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in, actually, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, do we have a further motion?
I would make a motion to approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, that is a vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me to open and close too, because you know I would have forgotten it. Okay, moving on, and again, Agenda Item 5B, yes, Agenda Item 5B has been continued at the request of the applicant. No communications.
Excuse me, through the chair?
Yep.
Is there a requirement for them to cancel or not cancel, like notice-wise, is, do we have, like, you need to provide notice by a certain time?
I do not know the answer to that.
For the developer to cancel?
For anyone that's looking for a continuance.
No, there is no, there is no deadline by law. First of all, this isn't a public hearing. I know it's hard to hear with the rain, so I apologize. That, it wasn't a public hearing, it was a public meeting, but the notice came, as soon as I received the notice, I let the board know. The developer indicated that they did receive a number of questions and some comments back from some department heads on some of their concerns, and they want to have a chance to address them. So they felt that it would be premature to come in this evening without being able to answer those questions. And I know from the board members, we probably received four or five comments last night on a Sunday night, obviously, can't even get to address them today, so they just felt that they wanted the extra time.
Thank you. And just want to make a statement too, that their concerns are being heard. I know not everyone's here, but again, that reason for the delay is helpful, and, you know, if they have more comments, to send them in, and send them in early so they can get addressed.
That would be helpful if we get the comments early. It's tough to get them on a Sunday, when the office is closed, and then have to get them addressed on Monday when we get here. You know, everyone worked really hard to try to do that, but GPW had a lot of work, and planning had a lot of work, Building Commissioner had a lot of work today, so some of that we could get to, but really, if we can get them earlier, it would be helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7B, that's the Century Sportsman's Club Outdoor Entertainment License for Haunted Hay Ride at 531 Rochdale Street in Auburn, Mass. I see Mr. Height here.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
Is this, I don't think that's a.
It's not a hearing. It's not a hearing.
Okay, that's not a hearing, okay.
Good evening, Alfred. Alfred Auburn, Director of the Century Sportsman's Club.
Okay. And you're here for the outdoor license, entertainment license?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have anything to present, or?
No, it was all presented already, it's pretty much the same thing every year.
Okay. No changes from previous years?
No, other than a little directional flow. And we do online booking now for ease of time spans and.
Okay. Any questions of the board members? No? Okay. Questions of town administration? What's up? And any members of the public have any comment question? No? All right. And board members, you received the packets, you saw that DCG had no concerns? Okay, and with that, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all of the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, is a yes vote, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
The, for the next item, okay. All right, moving on to vote on the acceptance of the 2022 Capital Fund Program Amendment, Housing and Urban Developments Formula Grant to Carry Out Work Activities Identified in the Public Housing Authority's Five-Year Capital Action Plan. And with that, I believe we do have Betty from the Housing Authority to present on this matter. That is online.
Betty, can you hear us? I don't know if Betty can hear us, I can tell you that every year, the Housing Authority comes before the Board of Selectmen. Under Mass General Law, the Board of Selectmen is required to approve of the capital fund program, as well as any amendments to it, which we've had discussion with previous boards about the fact that that's a rather strange part of Mass General Law, because the Board of Selectmen actually doesn't oversee the funds, or the implementation, or any of the projects, but yet, Mass General Law still requires a vote of the board. So generally, prior boards have requested that the Housing Authority come and just explain or just be able to answer any specific questions, because it's nothing that we have oversight on. So I don't know if this board has any questions. Betty is logged on. Betty, I'll try one more time, can you hear us?
Are they muted?
No.
We're not muted, right?
Let me take a look, yeah, there is. Huh, the audio is not working. So, that would explain. She's not muted.
I think the audio going out.
Yeah, the audio going out, I'm going to unmute all for a minute. Betty, I'll try, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so if you want, if there are any questions from the board, Mr. Chair, if you want to send them through me, I can save them into the microphones so she'll hear.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the board members?
We have no oversight, right?
Yeah, Betty, right now, the board members don't have any questions on it, but I just want to verify, so this is a standard form that you have to submit every year to HUD? Then they're going to take a look at it and make any revisions that have to be made?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I will take a motion.
Make a motion that we, what are we, accepting? So a forwarding, approve?
Yep.
That we approve the Capital Fund Program Amendment for the Housing and Urban Development Formula Grant to Carry Out the Work Activities Identified in the Public Housing Authority's Five-Year Capital Action Plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote.
Through, through the chair, I'll just let Betty know. Betty, if you can hear me, the board just voted to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7D, that is the October 18th Special Town Meeting Warrants. And with that, I'd turn it over to the town manager.
Yes, through your, through the chair, in your packet, you have a copy of the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th. And what we're asking, there were two different votes here, the first one would be for you to vote to approve, not necessarily the warrant, each individual article, that's the next item, but to approve the warrant as far as allowing us to send it off to town council for review, and he would then make any revisions that have to be made for legal language only. And then after that vote, then you would go and vote on the individual articles in the town meeting warrant, and you can take them as a whole. Prior members have, have sometimes said that they want to vote for all of them unless anybody has a question, vote to recommend, or if you want to go through each one, you have that option as well. And there, when we get there, there are a couple of items that we need to update you on, so I'm going to turn to Ed for a minute on those.
Sure, so I don't, I don't know if that's something you want to get into now, or?
Let's take the vote on moving it to town council first.
This doesn't mean we.
No.
This is just procedural to move it.
We're just going to move it to town council, and then we'll jump into the next item, because I know that some of them weren't necessarily filled out completely yet, so.
Make a motion to move the town warrant for town council review.
A second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7E, the potential vote on October 18th, Special Meeting Warrant Articles.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of corrections and comments relative to the warrant before you tonight. In reference to Article 11, today, we got a preliminary, not an official certification of free cash, but we got word from DOI, they were having a problem with their computer system, so they weren't able to give us a certification. We're expecting that tomorrow, but we were verbally given a number of roughly 18.7 million. And in accordance with our free cash policy, the net gain from the prior year certification, which was 17 million, 385,000 is a net gain of about 1.3 million. Under the policy, we're allowed to appropriate up to 50% of that net gain, which would be 600 and, roughly 657,000. We're asking under Article 11, in addition to the 200,000 from overlay surplus, we're asking 300 of that 650,000 to also come from free cash. That would be a total of combined 200 overlay surplus, 300 free cash, total appropriation of $500,000. Also, we are asking at this time Article 19. It's presented to you tonight to appropriate a sum of money not known. We were hoping to have that number for you tonight, it appears we're not going to have that for some time. So we're asking that we postpone that warrant article indefinitely, so Article 19 would be removed from the warrant. Everything else would remain as is. I could tell you if this warrant were to get approved as presented on the town meeting floor, in terms of Prop 2 and 1/2, we'd be taxing, or we'd be utilizing approximately 49.34% of 2 and 1/2. That's about 1.23 out of 2 and 1/2. So once again, we're not taxing to the max. That would add about 600, somewhat $1,000 to our excess levy capacity. A lot of these warrant articles are addressing the inflationary impact on some of our line items, utilities, fuel, things of that. utilities, fuel, things of that nature. That when we presented the budget back almost a year ago, back in January, we weren't facing these kind of numbers that we're looking at today. And those adjustments are primarily under Article 2, the operating budget.
Yep.
Can I ask, through the chair, there's a decrease line item? It's pretty substantial, like not that I oppose the decrease, but.
On which one?
Um, the second to last in Article 2. Why such a big decrease?
So retained earnings, I know our SOAR Superintendent is here, Nick Schwartz. After examining the total revenue received under the SOAR Enterprise Fund and making an adjustment based upon a increase that was approved by the Board of SOAR Commissioners, we had a gap that we had to fill. The revenue that we thought was gonna come in for this current fiscal year came in less in FY '22. So we had to make a, an adjustment on the revenue side that basically left a funding gap that we are addressing through the retained earnings. Retained earnings is a line item, and the SOAR Enterprise Fund is an effort to build up their retained earnings. It's never expensed. But it's there to show that we are, we intend on building our retained earnings reserve account in an effort to deal with future infrastructure. So this would be a one-time adjustment. I can tell you, after examining our revenue for our receivable as of June 30th, as compared to a year before, it is elevated. And I think it's elevated because people are choosing, they're prioritizing what to pay. And I think the SOAR bill is less of a priority for some when they have limited capacity to, to pay their existing liabilities. So we see an inflated receivable. At some point, that's gonna catch up, and maybe that will make up for that reduction in retained earnings.
Okay. Thank you.
Bills are still there. All right, so what are your guys' thoughts on this matter tonight? Did you want some time to look at it?
I don't have to agree with it, but we can move it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I may, there are three different positions that the board can take. You can vote to recommend, you can vote to not recommend, or you can vote to defer to the petitioner and take no position.
That third option is how I'd like to proceed. And again, some numbers will be filled in, but I think some concern, obviously, we have bills to pay and things need to get done. I am concerned about if people are deferring their water bill because of increased costs. I'm, I'm afraid of any addition to any budget, so I take a neutral position. I'm not saying I'm for or against this. I think it should go to Town Meeting.
Do we? We're still waiting for this to come back from Town Council. Do we have to take this position this evening, or we would miss the meeting packets? Is that correct?
If I can answer that. So we plan on mailing out the warrant, I believe, on October 3rd. Your meeting again on the 11th. That mailing would not contain the board's position on any warrant article. That doesn't mean you'll still have time to take a position. You can present that the night of Town Meeting when you typically report to the Town Meeting Members under Article 1 and state your position on the warrant, just like the Finance Committee does. So there is time to step back and to evaluate these requests. But historically, the board has always taken a position on the warrant articles.
Would the other board members think it fruitful? I mean, being what Mr. Chambers said and being that one person's vote would automatically decide everyone's this evening, maybe we push this off, knowing we wouldn't get into the mailing, but that, I know that I myself will be at the meeting where I can speak to say that we've taken a position, or we haven't, depending on where Mr. Carpenter lands on the matter. But that's, let me know your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to wait until Mr. Carpenter is here also to take a position. Through the chair, I believe Mr. Carpenter notified us that he would not be at the first meeting in October.
Oh.
Additionally, I just want the board to know that we are having a pre-Town Meeting a week from today to ask our Town Meeting Members if they have any questions relative to the warrant itself. So you may want to wait to see what type of feedback they have to offer at that meeting. You're welcome to, to participate in that meeting, be present at that meeting. That's totally up to you.
Through the chair, I'd prefer to wait on that. I don't know if it's allowable to have Mr. Carpenter weigh in even if he's not at the meeting on each one or no. It's not acceptable.
It'd have to be an open meeting.
Okay.
But we could certainly, you know, you could one-off speak to him and see if he could be available just for a quick vote remotely on the 11th.
So I, I know by that meeting, I'll have more input and be willing to take action one way or another. And if that helps the overall Town Meeting.
Also, the board could consider having an additional meeting specifically to take a position on the warrant if it so chooses.
And through the chair, the, the other option is the board could continue tonight on other articles and take a position on other articles, especially if there's any questions because we do have a lot of our department heads here to answer those questions. And then if there's an article you want to hold off on, you can have that, just that one at a later date that you revisit again.
Your guys' decision.
Your only issue with Article 3?
My issues with the finance articles, I don't have enough information. I haven't seen the meetings. I, I trust them, but I want to just verify. And I'm not saying no to it. I don't want to say no. That's why if we can hold off on taking a position until, again.
Through the chair, that's a good point. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet this coming Wednesday to take a position on the warrant articles. The department heads will be present to answer any questions that they may have of them. That may offer each one of you an opportunity to watch that meeting and, and seek the information that you may be looking for.
It's very possible I would be able to vote after that meeting.
Sure. More information, that's, that's understandable. With that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this vote to the 11th.
Take no action or?
I just want to be clear, are you doing that on Article 2? Or are you doing this on the entire warrant?
Sounds to me that we're doing it in the entirety of the.
Entire, okay.
That way, we'll have responses from Town Council, Financial Committee.
Well, right, Town Council, it won't have, Town Council just looks, there's nothing here that will change. Town Council may change some legal language. He will just verify that it's stated appropriately, but he won't be making any changes to any of the warrants that you see because they're submitted by department heads.
Sir. Chair, I guess I would just ask the question, maybe the board would be willing to take positions on articles that either have no financial bearing or are not directed at the levy, seeing as all the department heads are here. So there, there might be non-financial issues that don't actually have to do with tax dollars. I know I have one of those articles in there. So instead of postponing the entire thing, maybe you could do some tonight.
Through the chair, that's, that's what I was saying, when you can go through and do the rest of the warrants, you can, you can put some of the articles off for later, but.
Okay. All right, so with that, which items would those be?
Well, through the chair, you can go through, but you're, so it sounds like you want to hold off on Article 2.
That is correct.
Article 3 appropriates an additional $25,000 of general fund revenue, so that's a, a hold, I'm guessing. 4, 5, 6, 7 amend previous authorizations for different purposes. So it's not gonna change the financial position, it's gonna change the purpose.
The money's already been outlaid.
Yes.
Through the chair, I'm okay with 4 through 7? Or 6, 4 through 6?
4 through 7.
Are we gonna go through each one? Do we need a motion?
I know, 4 through 6. I'd like to see exactly which ones are non-financial, and then we'll take one motion.
Perfect.
4, 5, 6, 7, 13, 14, 16 repurposes, 17, 18. 19 is removed. That's it.
Through the chair, they're pretty much, they're all financial. I just, I think, yeah, I think, I'd like to just.
25.
Make a recommendation though, because as I said, we have the department heads here this evening to answer questions, so if you could look at some of this, so you can see the police chief has sponsored a number, the fire chief has sponsored a number, the DPW and sewer superintendent. If you have questions, even if you're not ready to take a position, at least if you could ask the questions, so you have the opportunity to hear the answers. And then maybe you're in a position to take a vote and, and maybe not. But I hate to have to have everybody come back again. It's difficult to get everyone together for one night, given everyone's schedules. And we do have a number of meetings coming up that they have to go to. You have to be there Wednesday night, they're gonna have to be there again for a number of other meetings that we have on. So if that's possible, if there's any specific questions, because pretty much every article has something to do with financial matter. That's what the fall Town Meeting articles are.
If I, if I could, through the chair, if I could understand a little better about the concerns, so is it as it relates to taxation? Because there are funding articles here that appropriate money. For instance, from perpetual care, that can only be used for cemetery improvements or expenses. That's not gonna increase taxation. There's money being appropriated from free cash, retained earnings, overlay surplus. That's not gonna impact the level of taxation. So I'm trying to wrap my arms around the concerns that, that give you some.
So I'm, through the chair, I'm not trying to hold this up. I'm just saying I prefer to take no position on those that I don't have the information. It is, my, my default is through the taxation. I'm not saying that these aren't appropriate, and I'm willing to have all of these go before Town Meeting. I don't want to hold anything up in that aspect. But I just don't know if I would vote to recommend without the information. And I certainly don't want to not recommend, knowing that all of these things have benefits.
So the information is here before you this evening. So I encourage you to ask your questions that you may have at this point. You've been given this as of Thursday. I myself have reviewed it. I've asked any questions that I needed to, and I'm prepared to make positions. But if that's why we're holding this up, I think, let's, let's have at it.
I'm okay.
And I will note that there is one zoning article on here. And our town planner's here, that the zoning article was before you, before for, it's something that we have to do because we're an MBTA community that we discussed last time.
That's the vote we took last week, yeah?
I was here to explain it.
So, Mr. Chairman, the initial go-through that we identified, non-funding articles, would the board be prepared to take a vote to, a single vote to recommend all of those that have been identified, or would you prefer to do it in a different way?
Prefer to go that route and then ask questions on the financial matters or continue it. Again, it's, it's, I know it's my meeting, but being three members, this is really Mr. Chambers' meeting at this point.
It's certainly not. You guys can certainly vote the way you want. I'm just telling you where I stand. Through the chair, I have no issues with the ones that were just recommended. Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18.
And 25.
And 25. I would vote to recommend those or make a motion that the board recommend those.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor to, and just to be clear, we're motion, we are voting to recommend to the Town Meeting Members in support. Correct. Okay, having a motion in a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, so that is a vote. Just bear with me here so I can cross these off. 13. Okay. Yes. Yes, so board members, do we have any questions in regard to the remaining articles? So for me, that would be 1, 2, 8, 11, sorry, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
3.
I'm sorry?
3.
3, yes, 3. And then 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 19 being removed, my apologies. Take your minute and.
So I have a question on Article 3?
Yeah.
Just that increase, what is that related to? Is it costs of Medicare have gone up? Did we lose?
Mr. Chambers' question was in regard to the cost of Medicare. We don't have anybody from the town, the school department, do we?
Brett, I don't believe there's anyone from the school department on Medicare, unless you can answer.
I don't believe there's anyone present from the school department. I've had a discussion with the school business manager and the school superintendent relative to this request. I can tell you it's being amended because the, the revenue received for 22 was about 140,000. The year before, it was below 100. So they're amending it to 125, kind of down the middle, believing that the level of revenue that they're gonna receive for the current fiscal year will exceed the original request. That's why they modified it to 125, thinking, and they're being conservative, thinking they're gonna get 140 again, but they're going on the conservative side of 125. And those revenues, they have to be reported to the general fund. The DOJ will not allow that to be isolated as a separate reserve account for special ed expenditures. It has to be done through the general fund. So that's why they're requesting additional 25.
Through the chair. So, so that number will increase again, but this is more just for the accounting aspect? We expect 140 or?
So typically, what we have to do when we certify our tax rate, we have to report the prior year revenue. Any revenue in excess of what we received from the prior year, we have to justify to DOJ in a, in a letter, in, in writing. This would not require justification because the revenue is, from the prior year, came in greater than what we're appropriating in the current year.
Move this to Article 8. Article 8, vote to appropriate 10,000 from general funds, general fund revenues for the installation of water backflow valves in office municipal buildings as mandated by the federal government. Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, so we were notified by the Auburn Water District, maybe in the spring, that we had to install under federal regulations a backflow water valve that checks the water so it doesn't flow back. We're required, we were required to do the install, I believe it was 60 days after notification. Well, guess what? We don't have any funding in place to do that. We were able to do it in certain municipal buildings because they had surplus appropriation that allowed us. It allowed us to move some money. We went to the finance committee, got transfers. But we need to do, uh, a few more buildings. We are required to do for the, um, Auburn Youth and Family Services. They lease, we have a lease with them. That's our building. We're required to, to do that install. Um, and there are, I believe, a few other buildings in DPW that need, uh, that install anyway. So that's what that, that money would be.
Through the chair, would the, that be a good use of the ARPA funds?
That would be mandated.
We could, but once again, we didn't want to miss the opportunity if the board didn't support its expense under ARPA. So we could, uh, if the board still wishes, we could bring that in under ARPA. And if so, we could postpone this warrant article indefinitely.
I would have concerns about that. I mean, I would be happy to look at it under the ARPA dollars, um, but I wouldn't want to take it off here. I'd rather.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Okay, okay.
We would take it off the night of town meeting.
Right. If, okay. Further, I'd like to, I, I don't know where that would fall in terms of our list of priorities with ARPA funds, knowing some of the other items that we've discussed already. I know the HVAC stuff is going to be coming up soon, so. All right. Do you have any, does any members have questions on Article nine?
Same thing for me. Is this a potential for ARPA funds?
ARPA funds, okay. All right. Nine would be an ARPA concern as well.
And if I could, uh, note through the chair, I just noticed we had originally put it on there. Uh, just again, to, to make sure that we could do this, the, originally we were looking to, uh, ask for three hundred thousand dollars out of free cash for communications equipment for West Auburn. But in recent meetings, we've determined that the best mechanism for going forward would be to get a consultant to study the issue first because we want to know exactly what, what that cost is going to be, what's going to be required. There may be some upgrades and updates to the fiber system that we have to make in addition to the communications equipment. So we're going to be pulling that article, uh, because at this point we, we feel we need to do the study first. So I think what we're doing is we're going in to you in a couple of weeks. Once we have a cost on that study, we'll be coming in to the board asking for, uh, a certain amount of money out of ARPA to fund a consultant study to look at the communications system out in West Auburn, see what our needs are and see what we need to do to get a better idea of the price. So that one will be, will be postponed.
Postponed.
And if I may, uh, just so those who are here, because not everyone has the article, the warrant in front of them. So, uh, just for the chiefs to know, through, uh, through the vote to recommend certain articles, the fire chief's articles were recommended. The police chief's articles, all but one were just recommended. Those were the ones to repurpose funds because the funds had already been, uh, allocated. So the only one that was not voted on at this point yet was Article fifteen, which is to appropriate a sum of nine thousand dollars, uh, for proof of concept relative to proposal of the new radio tower communication system and AVTEC. So that one, no position's been taken on yet. Your other ones are, are good. Likewise, at this point, none of the DPW and sewer and golf course and engineer, none of the DPW articles were voted yet. That's why, so if we could continue to do this, I just wanted everyone to know where we stood because without seeing this, they might not know.
Pretty confusing, sure.
So that brings us to ten.
Ten, yep. All right, that's for appropriate five hundred thousand from overlay surplus, uh, to OPEB. I, I don't think we have any questions on that one.
My question is, is how, how well is the progress for funding that? Is that, are we ahead of plan or are we behind plan?
No, so we, we had a buildup of overlay surplus. You've got to remember, we have, on any given year, we have exposure because of our high percentage of commercial industrial property. So we have some exposure in terms of abatements if there's a discrepancy in value. We typically appropriate five hundred thousand dollars a year. And, uh, we grant about two hundred eighty thousand dollars in various abatements to the citizenry of our community based upon a number of criteria. Low income, elderly, blind, veterans. So the accumulation of the residual balance of those overlays have been building up over the years. Typically, we release that with certification with, um, the assessors office and DOR. It's become more important now for us to do that because we're being penalized in our free cash certification. They do a deduct based upon that reserve account. So, uh, that's kind of tying our hands a little bit on our use of free cash, which would have been certified with a higher value. And as you know, we can use fifty percent of that for one-time capital expenditures and things of that nature. After discussions with, um, our finance team, we thought it would be prudent to release a good chunk of that, not knowing what our free cash certification was going to be for the current year. We're using that basically to supplant our free cash because we typically appropriate free cash exclusively for OPEB and stabilization.
Five hundred is in line with what we've done the past, my past few years.
Yes, five hundred is, has been a baseline and we used to appropriate that through tax levy. But when COVID hit, we took the town meeting budgetary cuts of one point three million. OPEB was, was one hundred percent wiped out of tax levy. We, since then, we're funding it through our free cash. Eventually I'd like to build that back into the operating budget, but we understand and underscore the importance of trying to minimize the level of taxation because we know our residents are having difficulties given the current economic conditions. Paying for utilities and, and paying for other things that are really swallowing up their discretionary dollars. So, um, hopefully we can build that back in, but in the short term, this is how we plan on funding it.
Through the chair, if I can just add, we do have a financial policy that's related specifically to OPEB and the need to continue that funding every single year because of our liability. So we are on track. We, we have been doing it.
That liability is only going one direction.
Through the chair, if, if this is in line, as they both just stated, I'm okay looking to recommend this. I don't know how other members feel.
So do you want to take a vote on that then?
We're getting really confused. You want to take a few and then? We can vote each one.
However you want to do it. I just didn't know if we were.
Let's do, let's take the vote now. It'll be, that, that's better. Want to take a motion to, uh, vote to recommend Article ten?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article ten.
A second.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Hi.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Uh, Article ten is a vote. Okay. Article eleven, Mr. Kasnovich has already explained. I don't know if you want to expound on that.
So this uses up the amount that was certified as overlay. We did seven hundred, five hundred into OPEB, two hundred into, um, stabilization. And we had a sum of money from free cash. We, like I said, we got that, not official certification today, but a preliminary estimate. And so we currently have about three point nine million on stabilization. That would put us roughly at the four point four. Uh, not knowing what the rate of return is going to be on that, certainly rates are going up. So that's only going to benefit. But certainly I think, given our capital needs, given the increased cost in some of our larger capital items, we always utilize a portion of stabilization as a down payment on our big ticketed items. Could be a fire truck. It could be, um, um, we gave the school department three hundred thousand dollars to replace the turf on the football field. We try to do that as a way to minimize our borrowing and to save our taxpayers' money by not paying the high interest costs, especially as rates are going up. Also, with the looming public safety project, joint public safety facility, there's been some potential talk of land acquisition. Certainly we could utilize a portion of stabilization to address that if we had to.
Any further questions from the board members on that item?
Don't have a question, but I, this is one I'd like to wait until after finance.
Okay. So we're going to hold that.
Thank you.
Is the finance committee going to take a position on that article?
I, I fully expect them to take a position, yes.
All right, that brings us to Article fifteen. And that is, uh, as Ms. Jacobson had just, uh, explained, for the AVTEC firmware upgrade for radio dispatch. Chief, do you want to speak on that matter at all or?
Gentlemen. Hi, through the chair. Good evening, everyone. I know enough to be dangerous with this, but, uh, AVTEC is the software firmware that controls our PSAPs and our dispatch consoles. And it, it was recently purchased by Motorola, who was one of the largest communications companies in the world. And I learned after I resumed my new position that we were behind in firmware updates. So essentially they needed to do up, updates and upgrades on the, uh, on the, on the firmware. So we had to bring some consultants in to allow us to do that without losing our emergency dispatch communications. We asked for an estimate to do the firmware upgrades and it required actually three vendors to do it to, to keep our communication systems and our nine-on-one PSAPs from going down. And the estimate came in at, um, what was it, six thousand dollars? Six thousand dollars. It was something that we had to do. It incorporated police, fire and EMS communications to allow better interoperability with our, um, public safety counterparts, both within town and outside in District seven, chief? In District seven. So that's in essence what that article is about.
Members have any questions on that one or any concerns about taking the position to, uh, to recommend?
Through, through the chair, it sounds like the work was done.
Yes.
So this is for additional funding or re-appropriating funds?
So I think this replenishes something that they already expensive. They didn't anticipate.
Okay.
So it's a critical upgrade. It needed to be done, but it does put a squeeze on the operational side of the budget. I think they're just looking to backfill that.
I would, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
I would make a position on this one that we vote to approve or recommend.
All right. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Chambers?
Hi.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Article five is recommended. Article fifteen is recommended, my apologies.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I'm not missing any yet, have I?
Nope, I think we're on twelve.
I believe that brings us to Article twenty. Town meeting to vote and appropriate twenty thousand dollars from general fund revenues to purchase a new air compressor and associated electrical equipment and electrical connections for DPW highway garage. And do we have anyone who wants to present on that matter?
Good evening, Nick. How are you? Good, how are you? Good. So my name's, um, Nick Schwartz. I'm the Assistant DBW Director and Sewer Superintendent. This was for the twenty thousand dollars for the air compressor, correct? Yeah, so, um, currently we have an air compressor in the highway garage. It powers a lot of the pneumatic equipment. It's significantly exceeded its useful life. It's over fifty years old. It's in need of replacement. The hope was that we could get through another year with it, but it seems to continue to degrade. They're seeing a lot of effect on some of the tools that they're using. It gets a lot of water. The water gets in the tools that say it starts to, um, hurt some of those, those things. We're requesting the money now because if we were to lose this equipment over the winter, it would have a significant impact on snow and ice operations and it would be difficult to replace quickly. So the hope is that we would, um, deal with it now before there's, uh, an actual failure that we have to deal with.
Questions, discussion?
So I, I feel like this might be another candidate for ARPA funds as well.
Don't know enough about ARPA to really make, to respond to that. I don't know if that would qualify as an ARPA expense. Again, I just, my, the general retort to that, Steve, is that are we, are we taking these relatively small or ticket items to not put in the budget? And now we're just going to take away of our priority, you know, not be able to spend those ARPA dollars that we've really already kind of had a plan for. It's a limited amount of funds that are there and those are usually for, we're usually looking at a lot of the ARPA funds for bigger ticket items. That's just one vote though, so.
May I offer something, Mr. Chairman? If it helps the board in any way, uh, we can suggest that instead of coming out of general fund revenues, given our certification of free cash, we can take it out of free cash. Free cash can be used as a one-time capital expenditure. Not to be used as part of the op, operational side of the budget. Clearly this is a one-time capital. If that, if that makes your decision, uh, we, we can, we can suggest that.
When would we make that amendment? When would we amend the article on the floor? Can we do it before then?
Uh, no, I, I don't think an amendment would be required because it's still before, we'd have to notify town council.
So we can change it now?
We can change the funding source without.
So let's take out general fund revenues?
And substitute that from free cash.
Free cash. There's no other concerns on town administration side about doing that?
No, it's consistent with our policy. We're not close to the fifty percent.
Okay.
And we did have three hundred earmarked for the tower, for the communication tower, but now that the study is being done, um, we can always turn to ARPA to fund that tower once the study is completed.
That's a great point. We're really horse trading now. Does that change your positions on the other ARPA dollar if we're, if we're moving three hundred?
No, I, I think I've been pretty consistent with this. I, I do think this work needs to get done and I appreciate, you know, that. So it doesn't have to come from ARPA if it comes from free cash and we have that. Uh, and it's not going to hurt us in the long run, then I'm, I'm in favor of it.
All right, I'll take a motion on Article twenty.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article twenty, um, for twenty thousand, uh, from free cash.
Yep.
A second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Hi.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. There's a vote. Thank you, sir. You might want to. All right, moving on to twenty-one, uh, and that is for to appropriate sixty thousand dollars from, uh, from the Packer Shaw Golf Course retained earnings for the design of drainage improvements and irrigation system upgrades.
So yes, uh, we're looking to, uh, appropriate sixty thousand dollars. There'd be two studies, one for drainage, one for irrigation. The, the drainage, um, has kind of prevented us from, um, getting golf carts, um, in the spring. It's been an issue, um, every single year. Um, and then the irrigation system is probably as old as the golf course itself. So, um, it's just, we need to have the, the big picture, um, you know, done so that we can, we can look to see what improvements need to be made and prioritize them.
Which only helps gain revenue to the town for more sales, yeah. All right. Any questions on that one?
Where, where does the retained earnings currently stand?
Uh, once again, we're waiting for certification. I think there's going to be a net gain of two hundred thousand and change. I think it's going to put us close to the six hundred thousand dollar mark in that vicinity.
So about ten percent of retained earnings for this. Thank you.
Any further questions or do we want to recommend to move this one forward?
I, I don't want to take a position on this one to recommend. I would say stay neutral. I don't know. You guys can still vote, right?
Well, we know the vote, so, um, would finance, would FinCom? Well, we know the vote, so would finance, would FinCom, you know?
I don't know.
Discussions there?
I, I don't know if I'll get my answers there.
Can I just, through the chair, can I just, I just, if you could clarify what the questions are? Maybe we can get the answers for you, if we don't have them tonight, we can get them for you?
Yeah, I, so... The town owning a golf course is something that I have struggled with, it is money from that, and I just feel like the board shouldn't recommend or deny this. So that's my opinion, doesn't mean that it shouldn't go to the Town Meeting to recommend.
Through the chair, so is there a question on it, though? So if I can just explain, so several years ago, the town did a study to determine whether we should purchase the, whether we should own the golf course or put it out. And it was determined that it would be an economical strategy for the town to retain the golf course, do all the operations, the maintenance, the repairs, and the management.
Golf course makes money, correct?
The golf course does make money, we've, we've done very well, we've increased the fees a few times to cover. But all money that comes in to the golf course goes out and has to be spent on the golf course, it can't be spent on anything else.
Okay.
So since day one, I think this is year six, maybe even year seven, of operation of the golf course. From day one, it was set up as an enterprise account. What does that mean? It means all revenue expenses run through that enterprise account. Not a penny of tax levy has been used to support the operation of that golf course. Including, we charge for indirect costs. So the employees who are on our health plan, we actually charge the enterprise account to reimburse the general fund for all direct and indirect costs associated with operating the golf course. That allowed us to build up retained earnings. That retained earnings is built up from user fees only. That golf course is supported through user fees, golf cart fees, it's been very profitable.
So this is budget neutral, it stands?
It says no impact on the, on the taxpayers of the community. We haven't gone up on the rates in, since day one. So it's not as if, you know, we're not, we know that we have to build up retained earnings in order to address exactly what is being asked of you tonight. We don't want to deteriorate an asset that we currently have. By ignoring the drainage and, and, and the watering issues, the irrigation issues up at the golf course, it's gonna hurt our asset, it's gonna cost us more money to replace that or maintain it. So this is money well spent, there'd be more money requested as a result of this study. We would intend to fund that through a borrowing that we, we pay off over a period of years, and we would be able to fund that within the enterprise account.
Okay. So, does that answer any questions you have? I mean, this isn't really a...
Yeah, I just don't think I would recommend or decline this. I, I think you stated the case, I just... I can't reconcile that yet, so.
What is that?
The fact that I don't think the board should be recommending something that I don't necessarily agree with, but if we take, you can take a vote.
Or we lose that vote, so we're moving on from 21.
I don't, through the chair, I don't think it changes the fact that whether or not you agree with the town having a golf course, we have a golf course, we have to maintain it. And those funds are coming directly from profits of the golf course.
Oh, I...
So...
I think this should go in front of the town. I'm not saying I don't, just saying, like, I don't, if I say yes, that means that I support it, right? Or does that mean it just moves on?
It just moves on to Town Meeting.
I'm willing to move this on.
If I may, whether it be the finance committee, because you take a position on the warrant articles, I think Town Meeting looks up to its local leaders for guidance. Whether it be in the affirmative or whether it be not in supportive, I think they, they expect that. They, they look to their elected members, as well as appointed members on the Finance Committee as the financial watchdog to give them guidance. So if it makes you feel better to see what the position of the Finance Committee is relative to this, and we can revisit this at another meeting, or whether you want to defer this to the Town Meeting members by not taking a position on the warrant article itself?
Your call.
If someone wants to make a motion, then I can move on.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Article, or to recommend Article 21.
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Okay, and moving on to Article 22. To see if Town Meeting will vote to appropriate $3,000 from the cemetery perpetual care account for the replacement of trees and other landscaping at Hillside Cemetery. And again, that is a DPW Town Engineering matter.
So, yes, we're asking for $3,000 over, you know, span time, we have to replace trees, whether they, or shrubs, if they're overgrown, they have to be cut down. Or if there's dead trees, we have to, we have to take, cut them down. So just to keep that, the cemetery looking the way it, it does, we want to replace that vegetation.
Okay, alright. Alright, and do we have any member concerns, questions, comments? No? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 22.
I'll second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. And moving on to 23, to see if the Town Meeting will vote to appropriate $8,500 from the cemetery perpetual care account for the rental of equipment to screen loom at, at Hillside Cemetery. Pretty self-explanatory.
So in preparation for additional land to be used in the back of the cemetery, there's been some excavation, so, so the, the excess material is gonna be screened, and then we can use it to, for, for burials and possibly other uses, just because there's so much material.
There's so much over there, yeah, yeah. Okay. Same thing, any questions, concerns, comments? No, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to recommend Article 23.
We have a second?
I second.
Alright, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, and Article 24. And that is for Town Meeting to vote to appropriate $155,000 from the sewer retained earnings to purchase equipment and services to conduct the sewer system evaluation survey.
So the sewer division, as, as part of what we're required to do by DEP, we have to look at our inflow and infiltration. And so we need to evaluate sections of the, the sewer infrastructure on a regular basis. And we have gone through the process of having basically a prioritization plan of which sections are most vulnerable. So we, we have done the first step of the evaluation of, of the portion of town up on Packer Shaw Hill. And so we're just continuing, we want to continue on, on doing that. And whether it's purchasing equipment to be able to do it, to do portions of it in-house, or continue with, with consultants, we just need to appropriate money to continue to do that work.
How much does this, does this, would this cover the span of the entire town, or is this just still a portion of the?
I believe it's 10%, 10%?
Yeah, so how we've been, or how we've planned this project out is to do about 10% a year, over 10 years. But the, the thought is that you keep going with it, as a sort of asset management plan. Depending on where we stand with budget, we can trim that or increase it, you know, sort of see where we, where we land each year.
Okay, and this will help you see the, basically the lifespan of if there's any urgent issues present?
Correct, yep.
Any questions, comments?
Do we know what, what is in retained earnings as of now? Is this a large percentage of the retained earnings?
I want to say it's about 1.6 million. Certainly, we haven't received the FY '22 certification, we're waiting for that number to come in. We should have that, hopefully tomorrow.
But again, under 10%?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that we recommend Article 24.
Second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, I'm gonna need some help, where, where does this leave us?
So, I think 1, 2, 3...
2, 3, yep.
8, 9...
Yep.
25?
No, we approved 25.
Oh, 20, okay, so...
25 was approved, yep. Alright, so we have two ARPA questions, and the balance would be, or looking to revisit possibly by special meeting if we want to try and meet the packet mailing.
Yeah, you, uh, the packet mailing, it will be close.
It'll be real close.
It will be tight. It goes out next Monday.
I just have a question for Sharon. So if you were in their position, do we state the position on the warrant articles that they already taken action on?
Normally, I would do that, we would prepare the summary, and the board would, the board's column would say whether they recommend it.
Okay, so it would be, you'd have a mix, so you'd show your position on the warrant articles you voted tonight. Article 2 would have no position at this time. I, I don't know...
Could we make sure that we notate it in a way to make sure that they know that we didn't necessarily take no position? It's just hasn't happened yet, almost like a to-be-determined?
Well, well, I think if we are to put it out that way, then there's a presumption that you are gonna take a position, but I can't guarantee, you may not.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, the other option is it goes out without, in the packet.
Sharon raised a good point, we could put, if it's okay with the board, no position at that time, but we'll present...
The board will make the recommendation at the Town Meeting.
At the Town Meeting. I, would you guys be okay with that? That'll give you the time to watch the FinCom and really...
I, I do think, yeah, I think Wednesday, I would be able to take a position either way on those. I'm just not comfortable at this time, and I, again, if, if we can move it forward with no action, and it's not adverse, like, I'm okay that way as well.
Alright, so that could technically be done at the 11th? We could just continue to the, to that time? I'll reach out to Mr. Carpenter to see if he could be here by special, or just, just here for that one vote? I'm not sure what...
I don't, yeah, I don't know, I just know he said he wasn't available the first meeting of...
Okay.
It's, it might be worth a try to see if he could...
Just to see, absolutely. Okay, alright, so that leaves us with 1, 2...
The board takes no position on Article 1, it's just...
Right, that's just...
It's just a report, so...
Yeah.
Uh, it would be 2. They took a position on 3.
3?
Yes, no, they did take a position on 3.
Is that recommended?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I didn't write that down. 2. 8 and 9, there's been a suggestion on ARPA consideration, so they would have to remain on the warrant. And we would put that on the meeting of the 11th for ARPA consideration?
Yeah, and I just ask that Town Administration just look into that as, as far as where you see it fits into our priorities, and if it, if even allowable.
11.
That was a FinCom position, 11?
25?
25 was approved.
25 was approved?
That was his only...
25.
Sorry about that.
I think that's it.
2, 3, 8, 9, 11.
2, 3, 8, 9, 11, that's what I had. Okay, thank you for working through that, guys.
Does the board have any questions relative to Article 2, as it may apply to anyone that is in attendance tonight?
I personally do not, no, I, I looked at this, and again, inflation, I, I kind of saw the writing on the wall.
It's twofold, it's, there's really several things driving this. Inflationary items, contractual items as a result of negotiations. And the generalist recommendation as it was presented to you under the HR study.
Do you have any specific questions for the department heads, Ms. Ruffley?
No, I'm fine.
No, Mrs. Chambers?
I do not, thank you.
Fine, it's time. Okay. Save that, there's a lot of notes there. Okay. No further action needed on 78?
I think we're good.
Okay. Alright, for gift acceptances, I know that you did have some items in your packet, those were actually duplicates. So there is no action to be taken on those gift acceptances, that was, that was an inadvertent error. Inadvertent, excusable error, as we attorneys like to say. No proclamations or recognitions. And on the Town Manager items, we have vote to accept, accept and expend a grant for the Municipal Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Grant Program through the Massachusetts Office of Disability for ADA Improvements at the Boy Street Tot Lot and Franklin Street Playground.
Through the chair, there's a memo in your packet from DPW Director Joanna Paquin regarding this grant. Just to let you know, we've applied for this grant two prior times, I believe. This is an ADA grant. We're applying to implement some of the improvements that we identified in our ADA transition plan. So I had reached out to the state and said, you, you funded our plan, and now we're seeking implementation dollars to implement the plan, so with consideration, you know, what if, why haven't we been funded? And the short answer is that they've received more applications than there are funds available. But they encouraged us to apply again. So we've reduced the requests this year to the two lots, the Boy Street Tot Lot for $34,500, and the Franklin Street Playground for $68,000. So the total is $102,500, there is no, any kind of match in cash or in kind required. The grant is due this Friday, we'd like to get it in, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay. Any questions? No? Alright, and with that, we have a motion.
I will make a motion to vote, or to accept an expenditure grant from the Municipal Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Grant Program through the Massachusetts Office on Disability for ADA Improvement at the Boy Street Tot Lot and the Franklin Street Playground.
Second.
Second, alright, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Thank you. And we have the request for ARPA funds in the amount of $25,000 to conduct the engineering study of existing heating and ventilation, and that was...
Through the chair, there's a memo in your packet as well. And I just want to recognize and thank Caleb Moody, our Building Commissioner, for all the work he put into this, along with Joe Fahey from the School Department. At this point, we've come before you before and told you that we need, we're in need of a lot of HVAC improvements and repairs. When Caleb and Joe went to each of the sites to see what actually was going to be needed at each, we were not 100% certain which ones needed to be repaired versus replaced. So we felt it was most appropriate to get an engineer to come in and take a look at it, and to do a study on all the HVAC systems, come back with more specific recommendations, similar to what we were doing with the pump station, with the recommendations on the pump station. So we're seeking $25,000, Caleb received three quotes for what the cost of the engineering study would be. And then based on that, we would be more comfortable coming in to you with our ARPA request, because we could be very specific, we could say exactly which things we needed, what buildings were needed.
Alright, yes, this, we know you want information, which I commend and...
So I, I do just want to, is this going to also inform a capital improvement plan go forward? Or is this just... Or is this just...
This is, well, we'd have options at that point. If maybe some of the systems didn't have to be replaced right away, we could, we'd know that, and we'd be able to make a more informed decision on the ARPA disbursement.
So I would also say that this is in line with what I'm saying. This is for a study to get that more information, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Ruffey, any questions, comments?
No, I mean, do, I realize without the study, we don't have like a ballpark on which ones are...
I can tell you the ballpark, Caleb, correct me if I'm wrong, was the ballpark around $1.5 million? When we looked at it about a year ago, obviously, those costs have changed. Some of our situations may have changed. Some of the HVAC situations may have gotten worse in that amount of time. At the police department, we had some issues this past summer. So knowing that the change, the costs are changing regularly, I would say that it would probably be upwards of 1.5.
So are we anticipating that this is going to be the biggest bulk of the ARPA funds?
I would say it would be among, yeah. This would probably be one of the largest chunks in addition to potentially communication tower that we really feel is vital. That's something that we don't have the services out there. Again, with that study, which we'll come in at the next meeting for that request. But again, just, I think those would probably be the two major ones. And then we do have some sewer issues that, so you won't see them on a town meeting warrant. Hopefully someday, we can try to take some of these infrastructure things off. So that would probably be the next three things.
Okay. All right. And do we have a vote? Our motion?
I would make a motion to approve the request for $25,000, $25,000 to conduct an engineering study of the existing HVAC systems in various town buildings.
Second.
Right. And vote in our motion in a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
The chair is a yes.
Through the chair, thank you. Would you mind, I think, I think the police chief is waiting for the most exciting article. Item of the evening on trick or treat.
Yes.
So I think that might be the only one that you're waiting for, so if we just took that one?
Sure. Do I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 8E?
Unless you're, you wanna stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting with us. Okay, we're staying. It's a move.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Item 8E has been moved up.
And it's pretty basic.
Yes.
The standard procedure here in Auburn, and come to find out, a lot of other communities do the same thing. The police chief makes a recommendation for the hours of trick or treat. Memo in your packet, and he is recommending from five to seven.
Okay. Any questions?
On Halloween, actually, on October 31st.
Is the chief privy to which house gives the best candy or...
Twenty-eight Lawrence.
Well, I have to say, I think it was in 2012, we actually had Tropical Storm Irene that came. And we actually had to postpone trick or treat because we had so many live wires that were down, the kids couldn't safely trick or treat, so...
Let's not wish for that.
We had a snowstorm, one, yeah. The next year, we just, we had a lot of weather things around Halloween. So that is the recommendation. So the board, they wanna take a vote, accept that?
We have a motion to accept that recommendation.
I will move that we accept the recommendation of Police Chief Todd Lemon for Halloween trick or treating hours on October 31st.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Moving on to 8C, discussion on fire rescue staffing reports.
Correct. I'd like to ask the chief and the deputy chief to come up at the table so we can have that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also have the next article, which is the vote on the firefighter safety grant. If I could make a recommendation to either take them together or move that up, we can get that one done and...
Absolutely, we can take those together.
Much quicker discussion.
Sure.
Do we need to take a motion to move up?
Yeah, let's take a motion to take them both, take 8C and D together.
We'll make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a votes. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this vote, we're asking for you to approve to allow us to apply for a $19,000 grant, which is the max based on our population through the Department of Fire Services. And we will utilize this money to continue to upgrade our portable radio communications if successful. There is no match to this grant.
Any questions?
Was this similar to another grant that we applied for and didn't get, or wasn't there a radio grant recently or funding, maybe ARPA funding for radio upgrades?
That's the tower that we're talking about.
Right, that will be coming at the next meeting. We did discuss it when we talked about the so-called wishlist for Blaker Street.
Okay.
We mentioned the communications tower, but that's something we're gonna come in for. We will know better by the 11th, I hope, what the cost of that feasibility study will be.
Well, can't say I'm still not confused in my own head, but thank you.
That's right. So this is separate. We have a command for this.
All right, so we have a motion.
We have applied for other firefighter safety grants, so in the past, for other things.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the $19,000 from the 2023 Fire Safety Equipment Grant Program through EOPSS.
Move a second.
And this is to apply for, right? It hasn't been provided to us?
Correct. This is to apply.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a votes. And then moving on to the discussion for fire and rescue staffing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you recall, the town commissioned a study early in January from Municipal Resources, Inc. To conduct a comprehensive staffing study of the department. MRI came in in July and presented that study to the board. So it's been a couple of months, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to come in, talk about the report a little bit, and specifically talking about what I am going to determine, or at this point, state at this point, our critical staffing need. I think we're at this point, I did send you all an email last week, a detailed email, just outlining my position on this issue. As I stated in this email, I take pride in the fact over the 11 years that I've been the chief that I'm not an alarmist. That's not my job as the chief. I'm supposed to keep everybody calm. But as I mentioned in my email, we're at a point where I'm getting nervous. In the 11 years that I've been the chief, we've been able to increase our minimum staffing from six to seven, but in that same timeframe, our call volume has doubled. We are asking our firefighters to do an awful lot with the staffing that we currently have. And, you know, at some point, I think our luck's gonna run out. And as I had mentioned in that email a couple of weeks ago, we had another two-alarm fire. We've had several over the last five to six weeks or so. But two weeks ago, we had a second alarm fire on Dale Street. We were running at our minimum staffing of seven. The deputy chief arrived fairly quickly and was faced with the decision because we had a heavy volume of fire in the attic, and he was faced with the decision because we did not have enough people on scene in the arriving minutes. We need a ladder thrown, but we also need some hose lines stretched. He opted to stretch the hose lines. We had a civilian throwing the ladders to the roof. And as I mentioned in my email, that is, that is not the job of the incident commander. The minute that the incident commander has to take their eyes off of the big picture of the incident, people are going to get hurt. Firefighters are going to get hurt. So I think I'm very happy. I know town administration was as well. To me, this was not surprising. I think that this is a very detailed and a good report. There is nothing in here that shocked me. This is what I've known all along, that we've known all along. I'm glad that it was validated by a third-party independent. Let me back up. As you also know, this board approved us to apply for a safer grant for 12 firefighters. Just last week, on Friday, they started making the, what are the, million-plus awards? So they broke, they break them up where the under $1 million requests, those have been being distributed for maybe the last four to five weeks. This past Friday, they just started on the million plus. As I had mentioned in the email, I think we wrote a good grant. We wrote a grant that allowed us to get two safer positions before that will expire December of this year. I think at the end of the day, it's a good grant, it's a good case, but it is a nationwide competitive grant. And the reality is, is we have about a 10% chance of receiving that grant. So if we receive notification that we get that grant, that would be amazing. In some respects, a lot of this problem is addressed. But in the event that we don't get the grant, as I had pointed out, we just really need to start thinking about what is Plan B? And how do we start to achieve meeting the goals that are outlined in the staffing report in the event we don't get the grant? And I had given you a suggestion that town administration is supporting by way of supporting funds as an amendment to Article 3 for new positions after the first of the year. And then if that, if we don't get the grant and those, and we got those positions, we'll try again next year for a safer grant and we'll reduce the number from 12 to eight, you know, on the request. So we'll continue to put in for the safer grant in the event that we don't get it. But I just don't feel that the community is in a position where if we don't get the safer grant, we can throw our arms up and say, "Well, we'll try again next year." As I had mentioned, we're at a critical point in our, in our staffing, and we need to figure out what that Plan B is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that email. They had a lot of great information in that email that you had sent over to the board. And I had heard stories from other town residents about, you know, citizens holding ladders, coupled with the fact that when that gentleman said, when he gave us that speech over the summer, that presentation, I remember looking over at other board members and seeing jaws drop when we saw how short-staffed that you guys truly were. So, you know, when my town's police chief is up here saying, "I think our luck could be running out," and we have incident commanders, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the quarterback of the fire. There's no quarterback on the field at that point. That's a problem. So I certainly want to hear from the other board members, but I can tell you, you have my absolute support on this. My only question is, how soon can we do this and do we have to go in steps?
Through the chair, just to clarify, yes, we support taking action now, this year. We hope we get the grant, but we are supportive of adding new positions. So we are recommending through town meeting articles, starting with two new positions in January and another two in April.
And is that set in stone at this point, or could we look to move it to four? And then what would town administration's position be there? Versus January, April, going just four?
In January?
Yep.
I think if there's a commitment that at least gets four in the department during the course of the fiscal year, I think the chief would be satisfied with that. We try to structure in such a way that would, and somehow try to minimize the impact on the taxpayers of the community. So we do have 600 of excess levy that we're not utilizing as two and a half. I think the estimate puts it at, was it $110,000, chief? If it's structured, two in January, two in April?
Yeah, so it would be $124,130 to hire two on January 1st. And then in that email, I did provide that if the board did want to consider doing all four in January, the request would go from 124, 130. That's the total, that's the total, including that staggering. So it's 26.2 weeks from January to June, and then it's 13.2. That totals the 124, one. If the board did want to consider putting all six on, it would raise it by about $40,000 and the ask would go to one, I'm sorry, all four in January, the ask would increase by $40,000, it would go to 161. I'll just say this, you know, and town administration knows this. Where, because we run the group, you know, a group system, we have four working groups, really in order to put an immediate impact on all of the groups, we have to do things in fours. Now, ideally, that would be amazing if the board would say, "Well, we'll support all four in January." However, I understand the position. Beggars can't be choosers. And if, and if ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we feel that the only thing we can do is two in January and two in April, okay. But just know that the goal here is to increase the minimum staffing at this point from seven to eight as we continue to try to move that needle to get to a minimum staffing of hoping somewhere around 10. So if we move the needle from seven to eight, that's only gonna satisfy 50% of the department on January 1. There will be two groups that are not, that will not be able to reset that minimum until April, okay? So again, it would, I understand the position, which is why I included in the email to say, "For consideration." If you wanted to have that conversation, that's up to you. But again, it's just, like I said, how it's structured, you know, that's a board decision. But just understand that if it's two and two, that there is that delay, so it's not gonna be the immediate, but...
Are these positions, are you looking for experienced or open to all? Is it...
That's a very difficult question, Mr. Chambers, because it seems like we, you know, and law enforcement is in somewhat of the same boat. I think they'll tell you that the hiring practices over the years have had to change because the pool of candidates just isn't what it is. For every position, we seek to try to bring in qualified people who have experience. Our last two hires, actually, our last four hires, varying levels of experience, but we were able to pull full-time firefighters from other communities. Two of them had at least five years of experience, which was great. One of them had one year. We have a new employee starting in a couple of weeks. She only has a couple of years of full-time experience, so she's not, you know, where the others. But we try to seek the most qualified candidates with experience that we can. That is becoming extremely difficult. I can tell you, the town of Southbridge has four open positions right now. They had 36 resumes at the time of their closing last Friday, one paramedic out of 36 resumes. And they were seeking to fill those positions with four firefighter paramedics. So the goal is to try to bring in the most qualified person we can. But it really depends on what the applicant pool looks like at the time. We've always been successful, and even if someone has experience, personality is the most important to us. You know, if we have to train somebody, it's not the best-case scenario, but we will train it. We're looking to get the right person and the right fit for the department and the community. That's priority number one. But if we can do that coupled with experience, that's a win. But I can't fully answer the question until we know what the candidate pool is, but that's always the goal.
Through the chair, and second question, follow-up to that. So if you were approved for four positions, there is no guarantee that the pool will be there, but your goal would be to hire the four most qualified? Or would you be looking to hire the four that fit? And if you needed to remain open until those people were available, would you...
Well, I mean, I think we've, we've always taken the position, whether it's promotions or, you know, hiring. If we don't have a qualified candidate that we think fits the bill, I'll go vacant on that position before I hire somebody that is gonna be not the right fit for the community. So I've never been afraid to do that. I think in my 11 years as chief, I think I've only had to do that once where it was like, "Meh, we need to go out again, 'cause I'm not happy with what's here." But we're not gonna, you know, bringing on people for the sake of bringing on people, that serves no one.
Chief, you said, hire hard, manage easy?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
No, and that's, so again, it just, even if the board were to recommend for four positions, doesn't necessarily mean they're getting full at that moment. I know the job market's difficult. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I fully would love to see you get four people, sorry, 'cause I think public safety is super important.
So through the chair, that would, as I just said, that would increase Article 2, the line item for firefighters, by whatever amount?
By 60 or by the full? Does this already include two firefighters, I guess is my question?
No, that doesn't include any new firefighters.
Okay, okay. All right, so this number on the right, this $2,856,359 is going to be increased either by, depending what the board says, either by the two or the four?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Which changes the level of taxation. Right now, you've got it at 1.39?
1.2. 1.23, so that's going to grow up by the value of that dollar increase.
Okay. All right. You guys clear on that point? Okay. So we really would be in a position where we'd need, we'd want to take a vote this evening so we could amend this one? Okay. All right. So again, I made my position clear. I'd prefer four immediately, being that they do things in fours and that this is a public safety matter, but I want to hear from you guys.
So I had an additional question, so.
161, 051.
These four positions, I think you were looking for 12 positions with the grant, is that correct?
That's correct. So the grant request was for 12 positions, and if we were successful in getting that grant, that is paid for by the federal government 100% for three years. So that would give us three years in order to build those, those positions, most likely four at a time over three fiscal years in order to absorb that impact. And again, if you remember, just going back to the staffing report, the staffing report recommended an on-duty shift of 13, which, you know, in reality, would mean 16 new hires. But, you know, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to get to, you know, at least a minimum of 10. So I, you know, the 13th, yeah, that would be amazing, but again, that's not, that's not my short-term goal at the moment. But it called for, again, just going back with the grant for 12, but when you look at the report, it recommended to make an immediate impact in the department that we hire eight immediately or as quickly as immediately as possible to bring the on-duty shift, each group from nine to 11, which would allow us then to set the minimum at nine, which is what our current group is at. At max, it's at nine. So, you know, again, just pointing out that although we're, you know, we're shooting for 12, that's sort of the long-term goal, that the immediate priority, and again, when we come into budget discussions, if we don't get the grant, one of the things that we're going to have to talk about in the next fiscal year is, how are we going to try to phase in another four to at least accomplish the eight that the staffing report recommends that we put on immediately to get the groups to 11?
Can we vote on that one increase? Or, I know I wanted more information on the overall, I just.
Well, this would be to change the item within the article. We're not voting on the overall article until you get that information.
Through the chair, just, so as the chief said, if we win now, it's 124?
161.
It would be 161 for all four. But I just want to note that we did change Article 20 to appropriate $20,000 at that time from the general fund to free cash. So really, you've mitigated, so now you're really looking at about?
141.
So it's a net 141, but by going, by adding them, you're really only adding another 20,000 to get all four in January because of that decision to put that other item into free cash.
And this is important for the board to take a position on this only because we need to convey that to the Finance Committee on Wednesday, that the board supported the, an amendment up or down?
Mr. Chairman, the other thing that I want to just point out is that in my email, I also talked about the hiring of four additional lieutenants, which was recommended in the staffing study. The 124 or the 161 includes the $10,000 for the promotion of those four lieutenants in the, in the remainder, well, the 161, 051 would include the promotion of the four lieutenants starting on April 1st, moving forward. And again, that's a critical piece because, again, right now, we have two supervisors per shift, we have a captain and a lieutenant, but our minimum is one. So there always has to be a supervisor on. But we're, again, we're just, we're at that breaking point with the span of control where to have one supervisor not only supervising six firefighters, but between two stations, it makes it complex. So by promoting the four lieutenants, it will allow us to have a captain and two lieutenants per group. We'll be able to move the captain off of the engine, put them into a command car, as recommended in the staffing report, and then set the minimum for supervisors at two, which becomes a much more manageable situation when you have two supervisors on, especially in, you know, in any emergency situation. So I just wanted to point out that these figures did include the promotion of those four lieutenants starting on April 1st.
And Mr. Kavanagh, should the safer grant be awarded, these monies would just go back into?
So that's a good point. If the safer grant should be approved for the 12, the 161 is not needed for the purpose that it was voted for. It would revert back to basically undesignated fund balance and get certified as free cash. And the town manager brought up a good point. If we do get notification that the safer grant is approved, when does that start, chief? If the safer, if you get notification on approval for 12, at what point can you bring those in? When does the safer grant funding start?
Probably January, by the time you get done doing the paperwork and all the financials.
So we could amend it back to its original value if in fact it's known at town meeting that they got approval for 12?
Okay. All right, so I, at this point, would be looking for a vote to amend that line item to support the increase. I think it really becomes a question of two or four. What you guys' feelings are, or if at all, I don't want to speak for anybody.
I will make a motion to amend the line item increase for four firefighters? Does that need an amount?
I think, I'm going to do the math right now. Chief, what is that amount, 161 even?
Let me just give it to you again.
161, 051.
Yep, 161, 051.
I will second that amendment.
The motion and a second. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, that is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, mate.
The town administration.
They've been short-staffed forever, so I want to commend you guys for being short-staffed. The fact that you came here with the presentation makes it a no-brainer, and the amount of work that you guys have done does not go unnoticed. So hopefully you get the grant, and we can help get that 12, and we'll continue, or at least I'll continue to support additional hires as you guys need them. So appreciate all your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Thank you for the rest, for the rest of the board.
Thank you. We have no tabled items, no select board items.
Can I add one thing?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Just two, two things, just want to thank everybody who participated and funded, funded the Senior Center event, that was last Thursday. That was a great event. Do you need us for anything? Just want to thank everyone who participated in the Senior Center event, and thank FASC A, the Friends of Auburn Senior Center, and I know Doreen Goodrich, she did the catering, and then the Senior Center staff, our director, and everyone who works with her, and all the volunteers. It was a great event.
That was a great event.
It was really nice. And also want to acknowledge that, as you can see the trophy here, people may be wondering what that is, when the Wusachs had their town takeover competition this summer, Auburn won the competition for having the most attendees from Auburn at an event, and the banner is up there. It's a really nice, huge banner, so we have that, we have this beautiful trophy. And Sarah, I know you were one of the attendees yesterday to accept the trophy and the banner along with some other town employees. So that's exciting.
Get off the mound!
And at the end, additional funds were raised for the Tarantino Foundation. So that was really nice, too. So a check's being provided to the Tarantino Foundation. So want to thank you, thank you for going yesterday, for being on the field, and the other employees who went, too. It's kind of exciting, we've never had a trophy that large. They actually, Ed pointed out, they have the town seal on one side, and then they have the number of attendees on the other, so it's pretty nice.
Nice.
Yeah, so thank you.
Absolutely. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
And Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Good meeting, guys, thank you.
Thank you.